Okay, good evening, everybody. Tonight is Monday, October 3rd, 2016. City Council has a regularly scheduled meeting set to begin shortly. Beforehand, though, we have a public speak-out portion of our meeting. We have three speakers who are registered to speak for this opportunity. I'm going to ask that Springfield Public Access begin the broadcast at this time so that the viewers at home can have the benefit of the public testimony as we've been doing for the last couple of years now. And without further ado, we will have our first speaker, Ahmad Rivera of Springfield, regarding charter schools. Mr. Rivera is a friend to this chamber, former Springfield City Councilor. Welcome back.
Oh, it's nice to be back. Thank you, Council President Fenton. I'm here today to speak on Item 27. As many of you know, I was born and raised in Springfield. Went to the public schools my entire life. Lucky enough, was able to graduate, go on to a four-year degree, ultimately a two-year degree, and begin my studies on a PhD program on public policy. I am a proud family member of people who are committed to union and utilization. But one of the things I am here to talk about is that I think that the resolutions made by the Council, one, I think deserves a little bit more scrutiny as well as some fact-driven debate. I think that not being able to give an opportunity for multiple subjects, parents, teachers, kids that are affected, who really want the opportunity to come and be able to speak more deeply and passionately about this issue. Two, for too long, the schools have been in a struggle for Springfield. Many of you know this and have been dealing with this and working to improve our schools collaboratively. And I don't think that this particular resolution gives us the opportunity to have a robust, deep discussion about what that future can look like. It's merely a symbol of gesture that the Council will take a stance on that actually has lasting implications for many of your constituents. So I'm here today to say that I think whether or not I believe that all charter schools are good, I don't actually believe that. I'm actually just a concerned citizen that thinks that this council should either move it to committee so that we can have a more robust discussion and allow experts in the field, well, people who are most affected by that, to have an opinion. And additionally, I actually don't think that this is something that the Council should be taking out. I know that in July, you actually passed a resolution in favor of increasing funding for public schools. It seems somewhat redundant for this body to take a stance on this particular ballot question when this is not, there's no actually other ballot questions for your resolutions for the rest of the year, unless that changes. You could change that in the next three meetings. So I really want to make sure that what we're doing is taking up the business of the community and either inviting them to be able to have an opinion or allowing the liberal body to stay neutral in the situation and allow the community to decide for themselves. This is something that you all did actually with the casino, which was a great model. I didn't, some people agreed with it, some people didn't. But what this body did was it allowed the community to make decisions for themselves. So I would hope that you would do that tonight. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate all the work that you all have done. It's a pleasure to see you all again. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera. Our next speaker regarding the same subject is Margaret Brown. Ms. Brown?
Hello. I'm very happy to be here, and I wanted to say I've worked as a substitute and I've taught in schools in four different states. And I've worked for five years in charter schools in California, was involved in setting up and running Learning Center. I've worked in private, public, and charter schools. And the best experiences that I've had and the most innovative opportunities were with the charter schools. I just am concerned that we're fighting a political battle when we're looking at children and their, what's best for them. One of the things I found when I came back after being out west for 32 years 10 years ago is that the worst thing they could say about the charter schools is they were operating under budget. And it's the same thing we did in California. And I believe they are innovative, and some of the improvements that they have brought about, like adding time to the school day, are the things that are being incorporated in places like Holyoke now, where I went to school, I've also taught, and I'm working now. I'm not for charter schools and against the public schools, but I am for, to me, the bottom line is what's best for the children and what the parents can choose if what their students are going to is not working. So I just believe that we need to have innovation. I was working at SciTech High School, and I was on the board there, and we had a committee. We were talking about 21st education, 21st century. I believe that we need to look at best practices worldwide and incorporate those. And we don't need to do things with the status quo the way things have always been. I just appreciate the opportunity to speak and would like you to really consider the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next speaker and final speaker for public speak-out is Mr. Tim Collins.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on this very important issue. I found two serious problems with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts charter schools. The first problem is that currently, in Springfield and in many other places, charter schools are not following the law. The law requires the charter school student population is reflective of the student population of the community in which they reside. Here in Springfield and in many places across this Commonwealth, charter schools do not enroll the same percentage of kids who live below the poverty level, who are not native English speakers, who have special needs. And the special needs students they do enroll are the highest level of special needs, not the most severe, which are the most expensive. They also don't have the same percentage of kids who are in foster care, who are refugees, who are homeless. All of these children, if we're going to meet their needs for the challenges they bring to school, are more expensive. We have not even reached the cap in Springfield, so I see no need to eliminate the cap. But to me, this is the civil rights issue of our time. Because if this funding issue is not resolved, we're going to end up with two separate but unequal school systems in this city. One that will have the resources to educate all the children enrolled because they do not accept all of the children. And one of the most insidious things that some of the charter schools here in Springfield does is they counsel or discipline out any student that would jeopardize their test scores, their graduation rate, and they send them back to the Springfield Public Schools. You know, in my heart and heart, there is but one race, the human race. And it's inclusive of all ethnicities, all languages, all cultures, all economic statuses. And any school that doesn't, by its actions, agree with that philosophy, doesn't deserve a dime of public money. And the funding end of this thing, in the city of Springfield, $41.7 million are going to go off to charter schools. And their advertisers are misleading at best. They say passing this question will bring more money to public schools. This question doesn't add a dime to the budget for this year, not a single dime. But charter schools will get additional money when they draw our students away. There is a reimbursement program that has been shortened by Governor Baker. But the truth about the reimbursement program is if it's not funded, it isn't fully paid. The reimbursement was only funded last year, 56 percent of the money that was in the budget for the reimbursement. And if the state runs into hard times, and since they have not addressed, two years ago, they did a study, their own study. They came to the conclusion that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts public schools are short-funded by $1 billion a year. Pat Roach, our chief schools officer, looked at their recommendations, and if they would simply implement their own recommendations, it would mean $25 million more for the city of Springfield's public schools. Shame on the legislature for not having the courage to deal with that short funding. You compound that with the money that we lose to charter schools and our children, the vast majority of children in public schools, not the children in the publicly funded, privately run schools called charter schools, the vast majority are in our public schools. Across this Commonwealth, 96 percent of them are in the public schools, the true public schools. And let's remember, over the last five years, not only in the national assessment of educational progress, the nation's report card of Massachusetts students, then number one, we're also number one, or two, in some of the national assessments. Now, granted, this dark money that's coming in is coming in from people who want to privatize everything that's left of public, especially public schools. And their plan is simple: start a school, propagate, that they are failing, and point the fingers at teachers who say it's their fault. We have some of the best schools in the United States of America. We're not meeting the needs of all the kids. And the reason why is our legislature isn't living up to its constitutional obligation. The Massachusetts Constitution says they should cherish public education. Short-funding public education by $1 billion a year is not cherishing public education. It is shortchanging the most needy children in this Commonwealth. I've been at this for 43 years, and I've seen children with these kind of challenges my whole career. And if they meet with caring adults in a school that can meet them at their terms, that can have some enrichment things to deal with them, and lift their spirits and their self-confidence, these kids are resilient and they can overcome it. But every time they turn around, our budget gets smaller and smaller. We keep reducing services. We need this body to stand up and say, this is not the right time, this is not the right thing to happen. We urge our people to vote no on question two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Okay, that's going to conclude our public speak-out portion of this meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Twigs.
Here.
Here. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook.
Absent.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash.
Here.
Here. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Here. Counselor Fenton.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Counselor Williams.
Mr. President, without objection, I see an item that has most of the individuals here tonight, including our superintendent, which is Item 27. I think we clear that out, we clear most of the chamber out.
Okay. Okay. An objected to, so we'll stick to the regular agenda in that case.
The first item on the agenda is reports of committee.
Do you have any reports of committee this evening? Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, the Special Young Professional Subcommittee, which had Captain Huffnagle, Deputy Cochran, Chris Signoli for DPW, Jay Latour, who was the chair of the S.Y. Committee, as well as Attorney Davis, we met, Counselor Gomez, excuse me, we met to discuss the food truck ordinance and some of the concerns expressed through, you know, from the city departments. And we will be scheduling out of two weeks from now another meeting to go over those issues addressed by both Attorney Davis as well as Chris Signoli. And hopefully, we'll come to a resolve in terms of where food trucks should be located in the downtown district and how they should be regulated. So in two weeks from now, we'll schedule another meeting.
Thank you. Very good work. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Walsh.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to make a motion to take out of committee Items 2 through 11 on our agenda at the appropriate time.
Do we have any other reports of committee before we entertain Counselor Walsh's motion? Can we do Counselor Allen's report of committee first?
Sure. Okay.
Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight before this meeting, and we also held a couple meetings that I didn't report on before. I'm not going to go back in time and report on everything we talked about there, but tonight's meeting, we went over the financial orders. Counselor Twigs was there with myself and the financial team. We went through the financial orders, didn't find any problems with any of them. And then after we went through the financial orders, we had Pat Burns' report on the end-of-year report for last year. What could we learn from the end-of-year fiscal report from June 30th? Where were the overages, where were the underages? We have $4.7 million. We came in $4.7 million under in last year's report, including, included in that was police was under, fire was under, et cetera, as well as some others. It's kind of, I won't say random, but unpredictable sometimes. The reason police was under was the academy was supposed to start in February, it didn't start until May, so as a result, there was more salary dollars that had been allocated that weren't spent. Along with Pat Burns and TJ, et cetera, we're just going to keep an eye on that. We have the big issue this year of paying the bigger pension check. We've already paid this year's, but next July 1st, we have one that's $4 million more than this year's was. So we're just trying to think of places where we can save money, where we can be aware of what money is available, et cetera, because the pension will go up $4 million this year and then $9 million, another five, another nine, I believe, the following year. So the point of the meeting was to just see if there's places that are consistently under every year where we could cut back their budget or whatever, and we didn't come to any conclusions on that. The finance team keeps a pretty close eye on that. So the upshot of it was we approved the financial orders for tonight, and we got a kind of a good education from Pat on the $4.7 million that was not spent, if you will, last year. He predicts that about $4 million of that $4.7 will flow into free cash eventually, but that takes several months for that to occur.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, the ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Okay, Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to make a motion to take Items 2 through 11 out of committee for discussion. Now, I do think that when we sent this to committee, we were concerned because there wasn't representation here from some of the people involved. But what I don't think we realized, and what has become an unintended consequence, is that many existing businesses in the city of Springfield cannot operate, and through no fault of their own, they are being penalized. So I think we should try to resolve this issue tonight. I know, for instance, Valby Linen, that opened to great fanfare because, I don't know if you were at that, but all the new employees they are going to have, they've had to delay an opening, and I don't really think that's what we intended to do. I do notice that tonight, we do have representatives from Comcast. I see Attorney Eileen Brady there, and I think they're, I'm not quite sure if someone is here from the Board of Public Works, but I think this is a good springboard to decide how do we want to handle these, and do we want to require that at every meeting, we have a representative of the Board of Public Works and a representative from the utilities. But I myself do not want to delay any businesses or harm any existing businesses in the city of Springfield or their employees, which is, has happened as a result of sending this to committee. And I do believe that the head of DPW, Chris Signoli, can speak to that because he has been contacted by many of the people who are affected. So if he could speak to that, Mr. President?
Okay. So Counselor Walsh is making a motion consistent with Rule 18 of the City Council Rules and Orders. It reads as follows: If after 15 days a matter referred to a committee is not reported upon, it may be recalled by a standing vote of five members of the council. So all those in favor of recalling these petitions from the Maintenance and Development Committee at this time, say aye.
Aye.
The Honorable Counsel, Mr. President, on that, you said 15 days?
15 days.
These were referred last Monday. Some of these were referred last Monday.
I thought it was later.
It was not last Monday, because I was here and it didn't happen at that meeting. But I believe the clerk indicated to me that it was, do you have the exact date, Attorney Wilson?
These items were referred on the 12th of September.
Okay. So that's a little bit more than 18 days.
Okay, but on that, is there any reason why Comcast doesn't come down?
Pardon me?
Or utility companies? Is there any reason why they never show up? And the only reason why I referred it to committee then and last week was that we had a situation on Eastern Avenue, which turned out to be real good. Comcast absolutely destroyed the sidewalks from Eastern and State all the way down to almost Quincy Street. They've come out, they've done a tremendous job. I just commended Chris Signoli tonight. I just want to make sure when Comcast and utility companies tear our streets up and sidewalks, that they put them back the way that they were. This case here, Comcast, they didn't want to, but because we held it up, they did it. It's in Henry's District, it's right across from the Mason Square Fire Station, they did an outstanding job. It's fantastic. Brand-new, put it back. Prior to that, it was tire, it was cement, it was all, that's my only point. So just to let them come down and...
I certainly think it's a valid point.
And not get a...
And in discussion with the Council President, I do think that we probably need to discuss further how we actually want to handle all these reports when they come in. There is a representative from Comcast here tonight, but I think I'd rather have the director talk about the impact this has had.
Okay. Before we do that, we have to vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the motion is to recall it from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the matter is now on the table. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could call, I understand that it's Items 2 through 6 that were referred to committee, and 7 through 11 are being presented for the first time tonight.
Okay.
So why don't we start with 2 through 6? Let's call those all at once, Mr. Clerk, and then we can hear from Mr. Signoli.
Items 2 through 6 are reports of recommendation from the Board of Public Works for petitions from Verizon, Mobility, Comcast, and Eversource. Petitions for Mobility are for the installation of antenna. The petitions from Comcast and Verizon are for fiber optic conduits.
Mr. Signoli.
Good evening, counselors. Thank you. As Attorney Wilson was just mentioning, these items are various throughout the city. Just to give a little background of how this works, application is made to the Department of Public Works. We review the application to make sure it's acceptable. If it is acceptable, it's referred to the Board of Public Works. They hold a meeting, and then once, once the approval is given at the Board of Public Works, it's referred to the City Council. So any items that are being put forward in the city that don't meet the requirements of what we, of kind of something being logical of what we're trying to do usually doesn't even make it this far. If an item on here is approved by the City Council, the entities are required to obtain an occupancy and excavation permit. So the items such as Counselor Williams we're talking about of repair of streets, repair of sidewalks, we have the teeth in the requirements to make sure that that work gets done. In that particular case, we, you know, we're dealing with utilities such as Verizon, Comcast, and Columbia Gas, who do a lot of excavation in the city, who unfortunately tear up a lot of roads and sidewalks. So we have the ability, not necessarily from this approval standpoint, but also through our occupancy and excavation standpoint. On the five items that we're talking about, the two Comcast items are essentially extensions of existing lines to be able to service additional areas. Eversource is, has been working in the Hill McKnight, Upper Hill, Old Hill area to get additional redundancy of their systems. Verizon, basically from State to Union Street, to put in additional services to, A, service the MGM facility, but also be able to not have any down system for any of the other areas once that is built. And the mobility in front of us, and there's some others that are on the list, basically they're creating a wireless network within the city, so essentially putting in a utility-type pole in various locations around the city. They've all, as I mentioned before, they've all been vetted, they've all been reviewed, and they've all been through the Board of Public Works process.
Are they here?
Um, I don't know if anybody from Mobility is here. Right there. I'm sorry.
Okay. So before we get to the individual, so before we get to the applications, earlier this week, I had a conference with the city engineer who is the, who has delegated authority in some context from the Director of DPW, Mr. Signoli. And we talked about why are these things going to committee? It seemed to me, counselors, that they're going to committee because we get a report from the Board of Public Works that sometimes leaves us wanting for more information. And while generally, it's not our practice to spend an awful lot of time on each of these utility applications, every once in a while, there's a sensitive one that we care about, either because we know about a project that's happening in that immediate vicinity or because we have some questions for the company that may be applying for that application. So what I said to the city engineer earlier today was that I think it would do a lot of good if we had maybe like a five-sentence, one-paragraph summary for each of these ones, drafted either by the city engineer or the Board of Public Works, explaining what they're trying to do, when they had the meeting, who showed up, and what the conclusions were. I understand that a lot of that information is in this packet that we have here today for the ones that were referred to committee, but that has not historically been the practice. So when confronted with the question of whether or not we would like these petitioners, whether it be Comcast, Verizon, or a private business owner, to come before us each and every time that they have a curb cut or, you know, a pole that they want to place, the answer to me seems to be no. However, if we have a question one night and they're not here, they've got to expect to be going to committee. And that was sort of how I handled it with the city engineer. So unless counselors want to handle it a different way or have any objection, we'll be getting a different form report moving forward. And, you know, certainly applicants are invited to come to our meetings, and if they choose not to, and we decide to delay, then I suppose they do so at their own peril. Are there any objections on the council to me handling it that way?
One item I would like to add on that, Counselor, is in most cases at these meetings, somebody from DPW is here, whether myself or somebody else, whether it's a traffic commission issuer or Board of Public Works, somebody from DPW will be here from the city side perspective to be able to address those items as well.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful.
Very good. So something good has come out of this.
Okay. So with that, Item Number 2 is different than anything that we've ever done. So why don't we have the person from Mobile Lite come and give us a little bit of an explanation on this? Introduce yourself, sir. Name and address, please.
Yep. Brian Goddett, 66 Glenbrook Road, Stanford, Connecticut.
Okay.
With Mobility. We're here, we've got, I think, four applications before you tonight. Quick background on Mobility, we're providing a sort of a hybrid mobile backhaul network that's going to further the data coverage and needs in the city, not only here, across the state and across the country. It takes out the need now for trenching thousands, sometimes thousands of feet of fiber in public rights of way, and replaces that with a mobile wireless backhaul solution.
Good.
Are you a wireless provider, sir?
We are not.
So you lease the antennas to wireless companies? Is that what you do?
So the antennas are owned by Mobility. It's a shared, shared infrastructure system. So the carriers, the wireless carriers, will provide their signal through our infrastructure.
And counselors, admittedly, I am more familiar with this industry than, than most because of my day job, but we have run into in the past issues with speculation on towers. There was one on Berkshire Ave. I don't know, many people might not be familiar with it here, but it was a company that came in, proposed to build a tower. They didn't have any co-locators, which is like a Verizon or a T-Mobile or Sprint. They built the tower, and there are no co-locators, there's nobody transmitting a signal out of the tower. And so I guess what we need to be cognizant of when we are dealing with a company that isn't necessarily providing coverage, it's that we make certain that this development moves forward and that coverage is actually provided, and it's not being built on speculation. What do you have to say about that, sir? Are you, do you have any carriers that...
Yes, we do.
Are leasing for these locations?
Yes. I do confidentially, I can't say which carrier. I do confidentially, I can't say which carrier, but we do, and we're working with the four major carriers.
So, for this particular site, you have a wireless provider that's already committed legally to going and using that antenna? Okay. All right. I understand.
Yeah, for all four of them.
All right. That answered my question. That's the only question I have. Counselor Williams.
And they're not... You're not using the cell towers?
They're not cell towers.
Not the cell towers.
Correct.
The towers that you have some kind of agreement with one of the major carriers.
Correct.
And as President Fenton had said, that's, you know, that's... It's a problem about the Commonwealth, Mr. President. It's a problem about the Commonwealth, because this does happen, come up, and then all of a sudden, the situation you had worked out doesn't work out. And I hopefully that it does. But you're assuring us tonight that you have a ironclad deal, I guess, I would say.
100%.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Twigs.
Mr. President, I rise, because my colleague, Counselor Bud Williams, has spoken on several occasions with regards to these. Now, normally, these things happen in the inner city.
That's right.
You know, when they happen in the inner city, they don't give a whoop. How they leave it.
That's true.
And...
That's true.
We do a lot of work with DPW to get our roads and stuff done over. And these guys come in here and dig it up and throw some ash, some blacktop on it, and keep moving. I want the record to show, I'm going to tie every one of them up until I get assurances that they're going to put it back like they found it.
Yeah.
Or better yet, put it back that they know that it's in better shape than when they found it. And so, since we have someone here tonight, I'm going to support it tonight, but if there's no one here and another one come up, I'm tying it up.
That's right.
I'm on record, sending it to committee.
Sir, one final question. You said three locations. There's only one listed here, off of Benton Street.
There's a...
Yeah, Benton Street.
Are they? Oh, they're later on. It's not this item.
Benton Street.
All right. Okay. So, any other questions on number two, this utility?
Yeah, just very...
Counselor Edwards.
Mr. President, very briefly, can you give me your voice is concerned about speculation. What is the harm of them speculating in regards to this particular item?
Well, typically, the reason that communities are concerned about speculation is when these facilities... And this isn't as much of a concern as just a standard utility pole type installation. Well, when communities permit a tower to be built, it's a visual inconvenience, so people don't like to see, historically, a cellphone tower.
Cell towers.
In their neighborhood, or in their business community, it's something that is viewed generally as an impediment to the scene of landscape. So, if a tower company is coming in and reporting to distribute coverage, we have to be cognizant that sometimes the company that's building the tower isn't the one that's transmitting the signal. So, they'll build the tower on speculation, and then they'll try to get a Verizon or Sprint or T-Mobile to lease space on the tower that they're intenting to. So, this isn't as much of a concern, because this gentleman has said that they already have carriers committed to each of these locations, so we know the signal will be transmitted from them, not going to be built and then left vacant for a long time. And we don't have to worry as much about it, because these are just utility poles, and they're not 120-foot towers.
Thank you.
Mr. President, why are you building a utility pole in the neighborhood?
That's true. Is that Benton Street you?
I mean, shouldn't the neighbors have something to say about it?
Who's here you're talking about? It's Henry?
General... I mean, generally speaking, that would be up, I guess, I suppose that would be up to the neighborhood. Generally speaking, utility pole installations are not... I mean, you could drive by it, and it would, you know, they're much less intrusive than...
Oh, so you wouldn't notice a big old pole in front of your house?
It's a telephone pole.
You wouldn't notice it any different from the other utility poles in front of your neighbor's houses, I guess. I will point out, though, that upon looking a little further at the drawings, 78 feet and 10 inches is really tall utility poles.
One item I wanted to address with Counselor Twigs, abutters are notified as part of the Board of Public Works process.
I'm sorry?
Abutters are notified as part of the Board of Public Works process.
Thank you very much.
Sir, 78 feet?
Yeah, I believe two are the 75 to 78-foot top of the antenna, and two are in the 40 to 45-foot range.
Aquarius.
Because somehow, it's a typical utility pole. Definitely not...
30 and 45 feet.
This would be dealt.
30 and 45 feet?
All right. Jim brought my board of concern, but that's tall. That's pretty tall.
That's pretty tough.
78 feet is pretty tall. That will definitely stick out from the utility pole.
It's that?
You'll see that one, Mr. President.
You'll see that one.
Thank you, sir.
We'll see that coming.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just on the utility pole, is it a new utility pole or using an existing utility pole?
New pole.
And it's right, and it's similar to where the other utility poles are?
Very, very similar.
They're not?
Wooden poles.
But they're in close proximity? Like, one's not here, and one's 50 feet down or 20 feet?
They're split up. You're not going to have two on the same street, two within 50 feet of each other. The four, I think, are split up by...
Is this a new... Is this going to be a new utility pole?
Yes, sir.
Freestanding, and there's no other poles around it?
Correct.
And this is on Benton Street?
Yes.
Benton and what?
State, I believe.
I... Well, Benton is Mass Mutual's right there, you got the Aquarius Restaurants right there, you got Providence Streets right in there. It's only from the Wilbournham Road to State, it's only a small area. I'm just... I just be curious exactly where it is, because Mass Mutual's more towards State.
The corner of Benton and State, right there. Based on the drawings here.
I think it's about 40 or maybe 40 feet from the corner.
Are you going to hang wires on this pole of any type?
No wires.
Chris, can you come and explain to me what makes this a utility pole, then? It's 78 feet, he's got no other... He's got no other wires hanging on it.
I don't think I know.
It doesn't meet the minimum requirement of a cell tower.
Which is?
100 and... I believe it's 100 or 110.
110.
Does not meet that requirement. Because utility poles in the city, there are some that are higher for clearance purposes, and this meets that requirement.
Okay. Wow. Seems like... Seems like a new thing. Seems like it's pretty tall. What does everybody think?
What does a...
We're spending a lot of time on it.
Is Phil... Phil Jomieszak's not here, right?
Phil's not here.
Yeah. Let's call the question.
I would ask Phil a couple...
I'm talking a lot more than I ordinarily would, but that's because I have expertise in this area. It seems to me like this... These particular installations deserve...
You know, I'm just going to make... You can do committee a vote of this, similar to when they started cell towers in Springfield, and we didn't have the regulations. It was a new industry. I would suggest this body's going to have to look at this industry, because this is cutting-edge, and you're going to have to have some kind of regulations or systems in place. I don't know. But we don't have anything to be governed us by, do we, Chris?
Is there a motion to refer it to committee, Counselor Gomez?
We have anything to govern... Is there anything in the regulations that deal with this, the size of this pole, that's what in the cell tower legislation?
No, as long as it doesn't meet that zoning requirement, it ends up falling under, you know, the standard Board of Public Works procedures.
I don't know.
Because items over a certain height can't be placed within the right-of-way, yada, 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 and it didn't meet that requirement.
That's crazy.
Chris, can I just ask a question? Who is considered an abutter, and how far from this, the tower will, I guess, are those abutters? How many have been notified?
We basically do immediate abutters, which, you know, could be one lot, but we usually do three or four on each side on these things. Or anybody that's in the abutting area. In some of these, there's going to be a pole put in, and they're going to be running wire from point A to point B to service this, and it ends up in that area as well.
Will this interfere with any of the, you know, the technology that's already existing there, that for those abutters particularly?
No.
No, not at all?
No.
All right. Thank you.
There are other installations like this across the city right now. There's one in front of Central that I know for a fact has been installed. There's some other ones. You would not notice them, because they're very similar in height to a utility pole. This is going to be double. Counselor Allen.
I see where it is.
You've got to stop speaking. Yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Twigs.
Is this just on item two?
Is it just on item...
Two.
What other items are there, sir, that are for this application?
Three, four, five, and six, I want to take out of committee.
What are the other ones, Mr. Clerk, that are for the cell antennas?
The other items for Mobility are eight, which is Main Street, nine, which is Taylor Street, 10, which is Dwight Street. Those are it.
All right. So, Counselor Allen, is your motion to put items two, eight, nine, and 10 in committee?
Yes. I want to say five.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion seconded by Counselor Hurst. All those in favor of sending this matter to the Maintenance and Development Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Ayes have it. Matter's referred to committee. Okay. Items... Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is the...
Three.
I believe you opened it.
Three, four, five, and six.
That's correct. Okay. So, we've already opened up the discussion. Mr. Signoli has already explained to us items three through six, which have been recalled from committee. The councilors have any questions on those?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of rebuttable of items three through six, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's call items seven and 11, Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven is a report recommendation of the BPW regarding a petition from the PVTA to install a electronic charging stations along Frank B. Murray Street.
Okay. Any questions on this? Mr. Signoli, you want to give us a brief explanation?
Yeah, councilors, as part of the construction of the Union Station complex, there's going to be a location at one of the bus berths for electronic charging station. And as part of the design that was forwarded to us by the design team, there's going to be one of those places that is along Frank B. Murray Street that will be dedicated as an electronic charging station. Obviously, it ends up needing to be in the right-of-way, so we've worked through the design and have reviewed the plans with PVTA.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 11 is a report and recommendation from the BPW regarding the installation of conduits along Marlborough Street from Eversource.
Mr. Signoli.
Marlborough Street, essentially what's happening on Marlborough Street is there's an existing utility pole at the corner of Bristol and Marlborough that needs to be relocated about 15 to 20 feet in order to straighten the overhead line out. So, they're basically just relocating the pole.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Item number 12. Oh, excuse me. Item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is the August Revenue and Expense Report.
Good evening, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the August Revenue Expenditure Report. As I mentioned in the Finance Committee this evening, you'll notice a large payment under debt service. That is a budgeted payment that is part of our debt schedule that was due August 31st. Let's see that we're now almost 70% expended under the category debt service.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, item number 12, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 12 is the Riverfront Park Grant and the amount of $1 million sponsored by the mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, councilors. This is the $1 million we got through MGM to renovate Riverfront Park, and we're slated to start hopefully construction by May, June of next year, and have everything ready for August of 2018. We'll be bringing the plans in for these subcommittees probably starting in February of next year.
Counselor Williams.
What are some of the renovations, Pat? What are you exactly going to do with $1 million?
Well, we're going to renovate the park itself, so we're going to be working with both the downtown metro neighbors, as well as the South End neighborhood, listening to their needs. But the infrastructure there is good. We'll keep Festival Field. We might put an interactive splash park in the entranceway that has a fountain feel to it, but can also be used on the hot day... Days for people to cool off in. We want to upgrade the lighting and the sound system at Festival Field, so it can have outdoor concerts and movies in the park.
Is there going to be any kind of move, trying to connect everything together? Because I know it's hard. I mean, the park is separated by the highway, and people have a hard time getting there.
That is part of the plan, yes, Counselor.
So, what are you going to do?
Well, we're going to be starting design, so we'll be bringing that before the council for updates starting in February, so...
Because it'd be nice if we could connect that whole MGM...
Right. I think you've seen the master plan that we've had on and off over the years, so we...
I saw the master plan. Yeah, well...
We want to work off that plan.
Yeah. And I'd asked the President, asked the mayor to reenact the river... There is a Riverfront Commission, Mr. President, that's been dormant for years, and I think the Riverfront Commission, I think you have an appointment on that. I really do believe that that should be really enacted in conjunction with what they're doing now, so there's some kind of oversight, and this body is directly involved with the renovation of Riverfront Park.
Mr. President, I'm here for item number 21-2, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, I have a brief question.
Yeah, I have a brief question.
Yes.
Is this site going to be controlled by any one entity after it's done, like how they do Peter Picknetly Field, or the golf courses, you know how?
The Park Commission.
The Park Commission, what I'm asking is, are you guys going to be like subcontracting an entity to come in and start running Riverfront Park, or is it still going to be open to the public?
It would still be open to the public.
Alright.
Counselor Twigs?
We would like to start that program up again. We did that about eight, nine years ago, for three years. No, it won't, you'll sit on your lawn chair. It'll be, you sit in your lawn chair and watch a movie. Put your own chair. Yep.
Well, we want to utilize the existing park under I-91 South and have a pedestrian way, and I'll be happy to send that plan over to you, that we have a concept that we think could work, and we can share, I can share that with the council.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think it's fair to say that whenever the Park Department and Pat Sullivan come before us, they really do a great job on all the parks in the city, and I want to congratulate you on the work that was done and the groundbreaking last week for the Memorial Park for Gunnery Sergeant Tommy Sullivan, his family was very happy with your design, and the residents of that neighborhood were quite pleased, and then again, you had quite a week, you started the week on Monday at South Branch Parkway, you ended it on Friday at the groundbreaking for the Senior Center, and, you know, he has a great staff, they work really hard, and they are all to be commended.
Thank you.
For all the good projects they bring to the city. I do want to know, Riverfront Park, I believe a contribution was made for a flag, is there going to be a great big American flag down there?
Yes, we have that contribution waiting to put that in place, and we already brought that up to the design team.
The people will be able to see from everywhere.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Edwards.
Mr. President, there's no objections, I'd like to call item number 21, since Pat is at the podium, if there's no objections.
Okay, as soon as we conclude this one, we'll try to take that one up. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Pat, this is a reimbursable grant, so the $1 million is being pulled from Parks and Rec first?
It's, it was a gift through MGM, so the account will be set up, and we will just start spending from that.
Will this be reflected in FY17?
I'll let Finney answer that.
Mr. President, to answer the question, this is going to set up in a capital account, so it's going to cut across fiscal years, so we have the time to do the project and do it right.
Alright, will it be reflected in FY17's, or 18's budget?
No, it's not going to be in the budget, it's going to be in a capital account, so it'll be in part of the all funds budget, outside general fund.
Counselor Hurst.
Just a quick question for Pat. Pat, is it possible to utilize some of this money, or allocate some of this money for maintenance? I know you guys just recently did the park where Ballyett School used to be, and you guys did an excellent job, but, you know, it seems like the grass turned to weeds very quick.
We have not accepted the grass from the contractor yet, he still owns that portion, so until we get a good stand of grass, we have not paid for that portion of that project.
Where's that?
At Ballyett.
Oh, at Ballyett, okay, alright.
So, we have not found that to be acceptable yet, so that's why it doesn't look as good as it should.
Okay, so will we allocate some funds to maintenance?
In our budget submission this year, we will be going to increase our maintenance budget across the city.
Okay, all those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 21, Mr. Clerk, there's no objection.
Item number 21 is an order granting a utility easement to WIMCO for the Ballyett Elementary School at 52 Roswell Street.
This, good evening, councilors, this summer we upgraded the electrical gear at Ballyett School, and the utility companies requested an easement to, if the case has to service that over the next fifty years or so, but it was a good move to upgrade that service so we could support the school system for their computer systems or any utility upgrades they need in the building.
Okay, any questions from the council? Roll call is required, Mr. Clerk.
On passing the order, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 13.
Item number 13 is a grant for the Department of Public Works Recycling Dividend Program in the amount of $56,000.
Good evening, Mr. Signoli.
Good evening, councilors, last year the DPW received $56,000 from the state of Massachusetts, and this is our second year receiving the grant program, and essentially what they've done is put a program together that rewards communities for doing certain things within their waste program. What we are highlighted for is having a multi-waste program, picking up yard waste, having mandatory recycling in the city, and having household hazardous waste days in the city. The $56,000 that we received last year, I think almost none of it has been spent, and the $56,000 this year are going to be for replacement barrels for recycling, and we use them for, we use some of the money for education purposes and enforcement. The barrels right now, we probably need to put in a minimum order somewhere around eighty or ninety thousand dollars in order to get a good price on the barrels, so once this money is approved, we're going to be putting in a replacement order for existing recycling barrels.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 14 is a grant from the Executive Office, is an Executive Office of Administration and Finance Grant in the amount of $34,275.
Okay, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Plant?
Good evening, Mr. President, to the City Council, this is a grant from Executive Office of Administration and Finance, Mayor Colback, in December 2015, the city signed a community compact with the governor's office, and part of that was to get a grant for IT infrastructure, this will bring in someone to come in and look at all the infrastructure and the backups to make sure that our system has redundancy in the case of a disaster.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the grant, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Item number 14, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 14 is the Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant in the amount of $11,300.
Okay.
The next, Mr. President, the next five, look.
Can call items 15 through 19 together, Mr. Clerk, sorry about that.
Item number 15 is the Massachusetts Cultural Council Acceptance Grant in the amount of $11,300. Item number 16 is the One Care Dual Rate Grant in the amount of $10,784.70. Item number 17 is the Springfield City Library Donation in the amount of $589.04. Number 18 is a donation to TJO in the amount of $305. Number 19 is a donation to the Police Department in the amount of $95.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 20, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 20 is a order to pay a bill of a prior year for the Treasurer's Department.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors, this is for work that we had done at a tax title property, to have some drums removed, and we just received, the work was done last fiscal year, and we just received the bill two weeks ago.
Okay, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the order, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook, absent, Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards. Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 22, second step.
Item number 22 is an amendment to Chapter 110, the Animals Ordinance, this ordinance was actually referred to committee at the last City Council meeting on September 12th.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Peebles.
Good evening.
Can you please summarize what we're doing here again for us?
Yes, in 2015, we brought amendments to the animal ordinances to you, unfortunately there were a couple gaps there, because they were, we were responding to a very comprehensive bill in 2012, so once we put those amendments from last year into, into work, using them as a tool, we noticed there were a couple gaps that needed to be tightened up, and we had, you had taken step one, a couple months ago, I believe, and then right when, after that happened, Governor Baker signed a bill into law to protect animals further from the dangers of hot cars and being extended, being subject to extended tethering outdoors, so those are also included now, so we're in complete alignment with MGL.
Okay, so, councilors, we've already taken first step on this, Ms. Peebles is recommending that we make some changes to this, that's on each of your desks, can we have a motion to incorporate these changes as presented to myself and the clerk? Okay, motion made by Counselor Edwards, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Twigs, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Counselor Shea?
I just have a question, I made a note, I think it was in the original set, I thought it was on page 14, but it had to do with the dog, oh, it said a pet, I think it was a dog living in a car, but there was no time specified, and the way I read it, you know, that dog is a prime range, it started right off the break, and come out, someone in the committee on could object and take action, it would, there was no timing, I'm wondering if that's a very common thing, how do we deal with that issue?
You're right, I appreciate the question, animal control officers, we use a heat gun, I mean, a heat reader, so we can't really be responsible for what the general public does, and this does allow them some more actions, but as far as our animal control officers, we always use a heat gun, and we always record the temperature, and the only time that we would typically take action would be when there's a heat or a cold advisory, more commonly a heat advisory, and the temperature, the temperature reading on the heat gun is recorded along with the outdoor temperature.
I don't like the big deal, but I mean, I just know a lot of people do this, and that, so, you know, where the window is open, I mean, do they, I just don't know what kinds of calls in the summertime over a small thing, I understand what we're trying to accomplish, but it's vague enough in the language that is a great problem, we can talk about a timeline and antecedents or anything of that, how do you manage that in an animal?
We would only respond if there was signs of distress in that dog, which would start with panting, but along with the panting would be the temperature inside the car, so we have no reason, this is a very, very sensitive subject, because typically those that bring their dogs with them in the car have very strong feelings for them, that's why they're traveling with them, that's not always the case, but typically, so this is an area that we would get the most feedback from, negative feedback, if we were to make bad decisions there, so the only thing that would happen if we did take action, again, recorded, the dog would be in some kind of stress, distress, we would be bringing the animal back to the center or to an animal hospital for an attending veterinarian to take over right away.
Okay, any other questions on the ordinance? All those in favor of passage of second step, second step to Committee on Enrollment as amended, this is first step, Mr. Clerk? Can you explain that, Mr. Clerk, so everybody understands what we're doing here?
Because of the nature of the changes being substantial changes to the ordinance that was before this body earlier, this would be another vote to take first step.
Sorry, Pam.
Because of the nature of the changes are comprehensive throughout the document, and they're substantial to, indifferent from the changes that this body had voted on several months ago, this would be first step on the new amended ordinance.
Okay, sorry, okay, all those in favor of approval of first step to Committee on Ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? Pass first step. Thank you, we need one more meeting, Pam. Okay, item number 23, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 23 is an order, is an order amending Chapter 418 of the City Ordinances for Preservation of Historically Significant Buildings.
Counselor Williams.
Counselor Williams, your ordinance.
Amending Chapter 418, the Preservation of Historically Significant Buildings, preventing the city from tearing them down without appropriation from the council.
That was a call for moratorium, Mr. President, on many of the historical buildings that are being, an estimation of myself being torn down without any real effort to preserve them, and reaching out to members of the Historical Commission and those in the historical community, and it seems like a good idea until we can get a handle on how we can begin to preserve our further history in the city of Springfield, we've lost many, many great buildings down, the one down in Mercy Hospital comes to my mind, the one here on State Street that maintained MGM, torn down, so I think we just need to take a real good look at it, Mr. President, slow it down, let's talk with the Housing Department, and I think what happens is that a lot of times we try to preserve these buildings, and they will put more money in demolition of a historical building than they will give a developer to help to preserve this historical building, it's a problem, and with MGM and all the history we have, from, from the quadrangle to the first motorcycle, there's a lot of history, Dr. Seuss, one time we let a Dr. Seuss house go, the place he was born at, or he did a lot of activity at, so I just wanted to call for a moratorium, so we give the administration, because I think they've been, I don't want to say reckless at best, in terms of demolishing very, very buildings that I think with a little effort and creativity can be preserved, there needs to be a conversation, Mr. President, because right now, as it stands, we, we had sent, we had passed the resolution, I think, a few months ago, just asked them, let's talk, and the next week they tore down a building, or the next two weeks, they knocked the building right down, so I think a moratorium will go a long way in bringing the mayor, Historical Commission, those in the historical community together, so we can figure out how we can continue to preserve the very, very history of this city.
Counselor Twigs.
Mr. President, I agree with my colleague, Counselor Williams, in this regard, I was, I rise to indicate that there should be some place that we utilize the Preservation Trust, they should play a significant role as regards to this council, inasmuch as the people on that body have more knowledge about the property in Springfield than any other single body. I don't know what we can place them on, I know that there was a committee that, Councilman Shea was working on, I think it comes before us at this election, but I think somehow or another, we need to create a position, I know the mayor is not going to create a position, to utilize somebody from the Preservation Trust, to look at our properties before we tear them down, or before money is allocated for demolition, I mean, why would you have a city of homes and don't have nobody to protect the city of homes, property, and I just think that we need to be more conscious about it, he's absolutely right, we can find money for demolition, but we can't find any money when we're getting ready to restore that property, to put that money into restoration, rather than for demolition, a person from the Preservation Trust could provide us with that kind of information right away. So, Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to see us develop something whereby we could utilize them better, and I'm not sure how we do that.
I think that's a great idea. Counselor Gomez.
I just want to ask a couple questions, I'm with my colleagues, I think they have valid points, but just going back to the summer when we took the vote, it's 180-day moratorium already, right?
No.
No?
It was, it was a resolution, so it's just.
It was a resolution?
It's us speaking, but sometimes they don't always listen.
Okay, so this amendment states that, that nobody can use, well, no municipal department shall use the funds without the approval of the City Council, is that what I'm understanding? It's not necessarily making a moratorium, it's just saying, because they're using terminology that's confusing me, so what I'm saying is, the amendment in front of us is not stating that it's creating a moratorium, creating a moratorium, but it's just creating that if they are going to tear something down, they cannot use those funds, and if they were going to use those funds, they have to come to this body first, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, if the city's tearing down a building, and it's a, let me see what the legal term, preferably preserved building.
Right.
And we'll have Attorney Davis explain what that word means to us in a second, then they have to come back to us.
Alright.
And "they" being the city, it doesn't affect the private party, but Attorney Davis, could you explain the definition of preferably preserved?
I'm Tashina Davis, Associate City Solicitor, and a preferably preserved building is any building within the city of Springfield, which is 100 years old or older, as recorded by the assessor, or any building or district which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, but the ordinance that's being amended already says in Chapter 418, Section 2, that these buildings can't be torn down after the demolition application is given to the building commissioner, they can't be torn down without the Historical Commission reviewing it first and having nine months to place it onto the National Register.
I think that the reason that we're having this proposal is because there's a carve-out in that same ordinance that exempts the city, it says the city applies to everybody but us. Attorney Wilson?
Pardon me, I just helped to draft that particular ordinance, there's a carve-out for, again, Attorney Davis can correct my wrong, but there's a carve-out for the area covered by the Casino District, there is, it applies equally to the city as it would to any private developer.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, I mean, I have a lot of confidence in you bringing this up, this is a problem, and is this the first step?
This would be, this would be first step.
So, I'd suggest we just have a committee meeting, because we're not going to resolve it, here there's a lot of respect there's on, but the nine months you're referring to, Adam, is if you're. But the nine months you're referring to, Adam, is if you're 100 years old...
We had that, yeah.
It's nine months demolition delay. But once you pass the nine months demolition delay, that's, that kind of, the idea is to figure something out in the nine months to save the building. If you can't do that, then the person can knock it down. We've had a couple of examples, where it's been, it's just, it seemed like it was a little rambunctious to cut it down, to knock it down without a little more due diligence or something. So I think we should just vote this first step, put it in committee and have a really good discussion. We're not going to get it.
Second.
Okay. All right, Counselor Shea, and then we'll take...
Counselor Wynton, frankly, this is a moratorium. If we pass this, there's nothing in what's in front of me saying it's a moratorium.
You want to amend it?
Just about your funds.
Amend it for me. I got to amend it.
All of your funds.
Hold up the funds, so, talk about it in committee. Talk about it in committee, yeah. It's confusing.
All right. And I believe that there's a provision in there that exempts if the building commissioner condemns a property. I think that's the way they got around it on Yale Street and some of these other sites. But we'll take a look at that. Okay. All those in favor of passage of first step to committee on ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Somebody going to call a committee meeting on this before next meeting? Any...
Whose ordinances?
I would say it's general government, too. I would say it's general government.
General government, yeah.
Thank you, Attorney Wilson, for the recommendation.
My committee had a subcommittee meeting on a very similar topic. I don't know if it falls under ECODEV, but...
Do you want it?
I'd be happy to hold a meeting on it.
Are you okay with it going to Counselor Ramos?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's going to ECODEV. All right. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
First one over.
Item number 24.
Come on, it's a good issue.
Item number 24 is an ordinance to amend Article 9 of Chapter 279, the mobile food truck ordinance. This particular ordinance was before the body on 9/12 and was referred to committee.
Okay, we want to keep this matter in committee, Counselor Williams and Counselor Hurst?
Yes, I'd like to do this in committee.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. It's going to stay in committee. All right. Item number 25, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 25 is an order amending Chapter 213 of Health and Sanitation to add freshwater fish consumption advisory. This is for second step.
Okay. Any questions on this? Everybody remember what we're doing here? All right. All those in favor of passage of second step to committee on enrollment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll take that up last tonight. Item number 26, Mr. Clerk. Item number 26.
Item number 26 is an order amending Chapter 82 of the Springfield city ordinances. Sponsored by Melvin Edwards.
No, I didn't see a sponsor in minute track. I don't know where this one came from. A sponsor?
I have sponsors in minute track, it's Melvin Edwards and Tim Allen.
What's this? Oh, this is the REO committee, okay. Okay, yeah, this is the REO committee change, I'm sorry about that, that's right. Okay, so Counselor Edwards, as chair, would you like to say a few words?
Can send this to committee or continue, we're not prepared at this time. We actually are hopeful to meet with Attorney Moore tomorrow at 12:30. We welcome all counselors to attend, we'll be upstairs in room 300 at 12:30, and we are in the final stages of a draft that will allow for us to present to the full committee.
All right. All those in favor of referral to the REO committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Do it after. Okay, item number 27, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 27 is a resolution against lifting the cap of Commonwealth charter schools.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank everybody that was interested in this issue and waiting to discuss it, it is an important issue, it is a raging debate in the Commonwealth, and I think it's important for the council to get some educated information about this particular issue. I'd like to thank our superintendent for waiting, and I think we need to do something about our agenda. I mean, it is traditionally been a courtesy of the council to hear department heads first, and, Mr. Clerk, I'm hoping that we can rearrange our agenda, so we can accomplish that in the future. So I know the superintendent would like to speak on this, I believe, and also Catherine Mastriani, who is the president of the Springfield Paraprofessionals, is here, and since they waited this long, I think we should hear from both of them. And thank you to the people on both sides of the issue for coming down to the meeting. Thank you.
All those in favor of suspension of rules to hear from the public, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Mr. Superintendent, nope. Ma'am, you can come up first, please.
Good evening, everyone, and it is definitely evening now. My name is Kathy Mastriardi, I am the president of the Springfield Federation of Paraprofessionals. So I represent all the support staff in the Springfield Public Schools. I'm not here to say whether charter schools are good or bad, I'm here to talk about the inequity in charter schools. I look at SABSS, which is our largest charter school in the city, over 58% of our charter school students attend SABSS. So I use those for my records. They've been around the longest, so they should know what they're doing by now. So when I think about what happens in a charter school, they have a lottery, and when I think about a lottery, you think statistics, permutations, probabilities, and everybody has an equal chance. So then when I look at DESI's records, and I compare the Springfield Public Schools to SABSS, I wonder what happened. So, in Springfield, 68% of our students are economically disadvantaged, but at SABSS, only 32% of their children are. In Springfield, 19 and 1/2% of our children have disabilities, at SABSS, only 12% of their students have disabilities. In Springfield, over 17% of our children are English language learners, but in SABSS, only 2.7% of their children are. So how do you have a lottery that picks out of our student population that has such inequalities? We know from SABSS's own records that they're for profit. When I look into a classroom, and this is what I see because I'm a par, we work with special ed kids, so I look in a special ed classroom, and I look in an ABA lab, or a LINKS classroom, or a SEBS classroom, or a PLC classroom, or a life skills classroom, or a developmental classroom, and these are all classrooms that have really highly qualified staff, their instructional materials are very specific, and they have a lot of specialized instructions, and all those things cost a lot of money. And when I look into SABSS, I don't see any of those programs there. So I'm not saying that charter schools, like I said, are good or bad, but I'm just saying that this system does not seem fair right now. And until we can make a system that's fair for every single child in the whole state of Massachusetts, I don't think expanding the number of schools we have is the answer. We need to work together to make sure anybody's kid can go to any school, not pick and choose what kids can go to what schools. So thank you for listening to me tonight, and the superintendent would like to say something now.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you for having us here this evening. I think Kathy spoke eloquently relative to the populations, the regulations, the state regulations call for them to serve a population that's reflective of the city they work in. SABSS has been in business for 20 years, and you hear that the population is not reflective of the city public schools, yet they're getting the average funding. And as Kathy said, it costs a lot more to run the special ed, the ELL programs, where they're really hard to serve kids. And like Kathy, I worked in one of those classrooms, so I know the difference between what it costs to run those kind of programs and what it costs to serve general education students. I'm not here to criticize charter schools. What I would point out is, this year, $36 million of our budget went to charter schools. 36 million. The Commonwealth has a funding formula to reimburse school systems like Springfield. The poorest urban school systems in the state have the largest number of students going to charter schools. So this funding construct really short-circuits what we can do for the neediest kids in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. On their tuition reimbursement that they're supposed to give us, they shorted us in Springfield $3.6 million this year in charter reimbursement. We had to take $3.6 million away from our kids in the Springfield Public Schools, because they didn't honor the formula that they passed. Like Tim Collins, who spoke eloquently earlier on this issue, said that they had a foundation review committee to talk about public school funding, and the urban areas are the ones that are hardest hit by lack of funding. The Commonwealth right now, based on their own foundation review committee, is short-funding the public schools in the Commonwealth by $1 billion. In Springfield, it's $25 million. Should be getting $25 million to serve the kids we're serving. We have the second highest economically disadvantaged population in the Commonwealth, right behind Holyoke, and yet each year, we're cutting our budget. So, again, we're not here to criticize charter schools, all we wish for is a level playing field, so that when they publish results, the results would be of a population that's reflective of an equal distribution of special ed, ELL, and economically disadvantaged students, and that the funding for the public schools would be adequate to meet the needs, and they wouldn't fund the charter schools on the backs of the poorest, most challenged urban school systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's why I'm here to speak against that. Funding formula they have presently existing in the Commonwealth is completely inadequate, that's not fair to the public schools, especially your urban school systems that are serving the highest percentage of disadvantaged kids in the Commonwealth. So I urge you to vote no on two, for the funding issues, for the equity issues, as Kathy eloquently said, it shouldn't be an opt-in, so someone has to sign up for a school, it should be an opt-out, so everyone has an equal chance of getting into a charter school. Then, for the first time, their population might more closely reflect that of the urban school systems they're taking kids from. So, those are the kind of changes that are needed, but this question, and Springfield, by the way, with $36 million leaving the district each year, we're not even at the cap yet. And who are the school systems where all the kids are going to leave? It's going to be your poorest urban systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that'll continue to be underfunded and have more money taken out of their budgets, and still left with all the hardest kids to educate, the kids with significant special needs that cost more. So I urge you to vote no on question two, based on what Tim said earlier, what Kathy said earlier, because it's just unfair to our public school children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, if you wanted to say a few words, you may, but please be brief.
Of course you may.
And I want to thank the superintendent for bringing up a really important issue that you all have actually voted on, which is the funding formula for Springfield and public schools is something that does need reform. This question and this resolution actually doesn't answer that. And I also want to thank the superintendent, because actually part of the innovation district that the Springfield has built because of the turnaround plan, because of so many Level 4 and 5 schools, actually includes using charters as one of their tools to help build up the system. Because what we've found in Massachusetts is that charter schools have some of the best in the country, that we actually measure, that the charter schools in Massachusetts go under the most scrutiny, have the most turnaround in numbers, and that is a really important thing. This is my exact point about what I've said earlier, we should have an open debate about expertise, there is a huge debate about the loss of money, the truth is that schools get reimbursed up to six years, it does decline after five, there's a current debate in the legislature about the funding formula, but schools actually get reimbursed for every student that goes to a charter school, the things follow the money. So the problem is that we're having a conversation that seems incredibly one-sided, and if we're going to have this debate at the city council, one, I think it should be at the school committee, I don't know why we're having it before the city council, and secondly, we should make sure that we bring experts, at least from both sides, to better inform us, because some of these things are somewhat inaccurate. And as you can see, there are our teachers here, we're the parents, we're the kids who wanted to come to this meeting but couldn't make it, who have a very different opinion than some of the people who've been able to present. So I just want to make sure that if we are going to have this debate, and you are going to make this vote, that it's informed by all the constituents that are impacted, not just the teachers' union, not just the public schools, that is, we are above special interest, and the most special interest to this body is the Springfield public students, and those kids deserve for them to be able to have a voice in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I just want to remind this council, and this is a political situation, and we have $18 to $20 million from hedge fund managers, from CEOs, that are funding this, and their advertisements, quite frankly, are a lie. They end each advertisement by saying, "This will bring more money into the schools." If the charter school advocates were honest, they'd be with us, saying, "We can't do this until the legislature meets its obligation to all of the children in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." Don't let this dark money by privatizers who want to change everything, they're in business. Our business is children, not making a profit, children. And every dime that goes to somebody managing one of these charter schools is a dime away from servicing the children, we need to vote no on this.
Ma'am? And then we'll get, we'll let the superintendent have the last word after you speak.
The most important thing about charter schools is that it is a parent choice. Some of you are quite aware of the whole political process of certain people who, at one point, and I will say it's our senator, Elizabeth Warren, who spoke about vouchers and said that parents should have a choice, because rich parents can choose wherever they want to bring their children, whether it's a private school, or they can move to a better neighborhood. Poorer parents are stuck with their one choice, and if that doesn't work, their child is stuck in that situation their entire school years. And when you have these statistics about the various numbers, I've learned how to set up new charter schools, we really want to make sure that everyone, every group is completely represented. But when you start with the premise that you have parents opting to go to a charter school, you may not get as many English language learner students whose parents understood the process of getting into the charter school. You may not be in the same setting. We were taught to make sure that special ed students were fully served. In any of these figures, you can definitely say, "This is what exists right now," but it's because the parents chose a different option that you end up with the statistics that you have. And then, they couldn't just sign up and go to that school, they had to put in a lottery ticket and see if their child had a chance to go to a better opportunity. In California, we just created more schools. Years ago, they lifted the cap, because there were many, many students who were living in disadvantaged areas, who had no other choice. So I'm just going to say, this is something that I think should go in front of a board, like a school board, and you should bring in experts from different areas, and not just pinpoint, "This person is the head of the charter schools, and this person is the head of the teachers' union." I've dealt with both of them. But I've also tried going to the regular schools after working in the charter schools. It's difficult to change the status quo, and I'm just saying, we don't have to say, just because the unions are strong, that the status quo is the only option.
Ma'am, can you please give us your name and address? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask you at the beginning.
I live in Holyoke, but I'm Margaret Brown, and it's 76 Maple Street, apartment 703 in Holyoke.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, then we'll bring it back to the council.
I just want to conclude with a few quick points, and one I neglected to mention earlier...
And one I neglected to mention earlier, and this comes directly from the council budget, the general city budget, that when you have a charter school, you have to bus citywide into the charter schools. The increase in busing just to the charter schools, the last few years have been $4.5 million, because you're taking kids out of their neighborhood schools and you're automatically transporting them across the city. That'll continue to escalate the more charter school assignments are made, because they're naturally a citywide choice assignment. It's going to drive up those transportation costs. And just reiterate one point. Tim mentioned it earlier, but the public schools in Massachusetts are number one in the country. And on international tests, they're in the top 10, way above the country. So the public schools in Massachusetts are performing quite well. But just remember, and I'm not arguing against charter schools, I'm just saying the present funding construct is very unfair to urban school systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to close the public testimony portion. Counselor Allen, did you have?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I don't know whether Superintendent Warwick or Pat Rhodes, whatever. The numbers always throw me off. Can you, I'm interested in the amount of money we invest per student in the SPS, in the public schools, versus what do we invest, the $36 million that we don't have? What do the charter schools end up on a per-student basis, whichever the fairest way to look at that is? So, you know, if we're at 10,000 a student in Springfield public schools, with the number of kids from Springfield that go to the charter schools, is it 13,000 a student or 15,000? That kind of information, I think, would help.
Generally speaking, Counselor Allen, the amount of money is exactly the same, because they take the per pupil, say it averages 11,000, you know, they take that money, it just follows the student to the charter school. Where the inequity comes is the really expensive kids to educate stay in the public schools. And the money goes with the kids that it doesn't cost as much to educate, because they're not in the high-intensity special ed classrooms, or you're not dealing with the really difficult English language learner programs and things like that. The expensive programs stay. A lot of the legacy costs, like pensions and retired teachers' health insurance, those costs stay in the public schools, but the money leaves with the kids to the charter schools.
So a student that's in Anadi Montessori is 11,2 or whatever it is, and a student that's in Sabbath is 11,2?
Yes.
But somehow, by having some other features of charter schools, the cost goes up because of, you know, selection, if you will, a selection of certain students when other students aren't selected or aren't, for whatever reason, aren't in the charter school? Do you follow me? There's an inequity that you see somewhere. And I'm trying to understand financially what that inequity is. And I can understand a little bit about it, you know, from the severely special ed kids, don't go to charter schools or whatever. I can follow that conceptually, but I don't follow it totally financially.
I'll give you an example. So they, last year, a charter elementary school opened up, Springfield Prepatory, and it's in the same building as Veritas up on Mill Street.
Speak a little louder.
Sure, it's up in the, right by Veritas up on Mill Street. And so what happens is it, say, 60 kids go there. They come, a couple of kids from each school, a couple of kids from each classroom. So at no point do we close down classrooms or teachers. At no point do we get rid of principals. At no point do we close schools. But the money follows those kids. And we have less money to pay for the building, to pay for the heat, to pay for the principal, to pay for the custodian, all across the district. So we still have the same fixed cost, the same cost for pensions, the same cost for health insurance, but we have less kids with less revenue coming in. So it puts more of a burden, and we end up having to cut in the public schools in order to afford the same services that we're providing today.
So if you had a, you know, a charter school that had 100 students, and they came from 50 classrooms in the public schools, and each classroom, you know, lost two students to the charter school, you still are keeping the teacher in those classrooms and stuff. But if the charter school was, came from, you know, three or four classrooms, where 25 kids went, I know this is absurd, it's not going to happen like this, you could then incur some cost reduction, because you would not be running that classroom anymore or something? I'm not, I'm just trying to illustrate a financial point, not a strategic education point.
That would allow you to reduce some costs, but not all costs. You could maybe get rid of a teacher or two, but you'd still have a principal, a custodian, all the utilities, all the other fixed costs.
So the...
The only way you'd have the exact same, there would be no cost difference, is if you just took a school and made it a charter school that's already there with the kids, with the principal, with the cost.
So in effect, what's been called in some budgeting processes that I'm in part of, overhead, if you will? Is that a fair term to use? Overhead costs are still the same, even though some kids have moved to another school?
Yeah, fixed costs and legacy costs.
Fixed costs. Okay.
Typically, if I could just add one thing, you don't get 25 kids from one classroom.
Right.
It's one or two kids at a time.
Right.
Those teachers need to stay.
They're staying, that's what I'm saying.
You have 25 kids in the class instead of 26.
Right. So you don't get any, there's no savings there. I understand. And do all charter schools participate in all the park, MCAS stuff? And, you know, I've often wondered about charter schools. I know there's creativity, I know there's new ideas, it's wonderful stuff. I just don't know how they do, you know? I'm not sure.
They participate in the same assessments.
Participate in the same assessments. And like most, there's a mix of how some do and how others do. But you have to remember, what are you, who are you testing there? If you're testing a population of kids, less economically disadvantaged, has a lower concentration of ELL students, almost no concentration of special ed students, inherently students absent the quality of education that's to hire or test. So you have to just look at those results and understand that you're not comparing established schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Shea, then Counselor Marcus Williams.
First off, this is a very emotional issue that is in front of us. But I would point out that, first off, if we were debating whether or not we're going to establish charter schools in Massachusetts, then I think that a lot of the arguments that we've heard here tonight as to the funding, as to the inequities of the makeup of some of the schools with special ed, or however that goes, those would be all legitimate arguments for this body to listen to. But there are two issues. One has to do with the funding, and the second issue has to do with choice. And the funding issue is not before the public. The schools have been established. So what's before the public in this issue is whether or not there are going to be more charter schools for individuals to be able to make choices from, okay? And the reason that that choice is there is because there are a lot of parents who feel that the school that they're sending their child to, and it happens unfortunately to happen more in a suburban, in an urban, a city situation than in the suburbs, okay? And that's why you see so many charter schools in Boston, in Fall River, in Springfield, and in Worcester. Because those are the school systems that have all the problems that society dumps. They dump them in the cities. And unfortunately, those systems have a number of schools that don't perform. And there are a lot of parents that at least would like to have a choice, to be able to send their child to a school that they feel might do better by their child. And after all, that's the importance of education. And we have to remember that all the schools, the charter schools, they're all public schools. Sabbath is not. They're a for-profit school. And to use the numbers and the systems from Sabbath in an explanation of charter schools is not quite right, because they're a for-profit school. But let's get off that subject, okay? We've heard a lot of comments tonight that, "Well, there's inequities, and these inequities need to be fixed." And that's true, they do. But let me give you an example. You're on your way to the hospital in an ambulance, and the ambulance breaks down. And the next thing you know, the ambulance driver's on the phone, and he's calling for a mechanic. And you say, "Hey, buddy, I need to get to the hospital. You need to get me another ambulance. You don't need to get me the repairman." And he says, "Well, no, you can't, we can't do that. You'll have to stay here till we fix the ambulance." That's the argument that we're hearing, is that there are some problems with the funding. There are some problems with the way it's set up. But those families that want to get their child a better education, we're telling them in the urban centers, they can't do that. They have to wait until it's fixed. You see, the people in the suburbs, they don't have this problem. And I would point out to you that an awful lot of the staff, of teachers in the urban centers, they made a choice. They moved to the suburbs, and they put their kids there, so they've got choice. And it's the families that can't afford to move to put their children in another school that are having the problem. This issue that's in front of the public has to do with choice. And it's whether or not we're going to allow families to have that choice. That is the important thing about, a society that has an education system ought to be promoting that system that works the best. And if you've got a school that's not working, and you've got a choice to go someplace else, you ought to have that choice. In Boston, in the charter schools in Boston, they're more effective with the minority students than the public school is. The black students in Boston in the charter schools are progressing faster than the white students in the public schools. And so this is about choice. If we want to argue about charter schools, that's a different thing. We need to get the legislature on board to deal with that. And we know they don't, because we've had busing for years, and they don't give us all our money. We've got other programs that don't give us all the money. But in the meantime, should children and families that have an option, or should they have an option to better their child's education, we should give them that choice. This is about choice, and whether or not that. And a lot of the people in the education, they've made their choice. They've gone out to the suburbs. And it's the families stuck in the cities that need that opportunity, because we've got to have an educated society. And if we don't get that, we're going to have problems. And you see the problems of inner cities all across this country right now, with riots, they can't get jobs because they're poorly educated and they're not getting the job. So the vote here, or the vote for the public is more important, is about choice. And what choice would you make for your child if you had the option to send them to a school that was doing better than the one you thought that child was in?
Counselor Marcus Williams.
First and foremost, I want to thank the superintendent, some of the educators in the room, as well as some of the parent professionals, like Lynda Dixon back there, who don't get paid enough, but that's a completely different issue tonight. I'll start off by saying that, I mean, I'm a product of the public school system here in Springfield. I graduated from Commerce, Ballyett, as well as Chestnut Accelerated. And it saddens me to see the state of Commerce as a Level Four school today. That's the same school that I went to, as well as Mayor Sarno, so I'm quite sure he feels the same sentiments. But I'll go further by saying that, a week ago, I walked the halls of Sabbath Charter International School, which happens to be in my district. And I spoke to Director Ken Ruder, and, you know, before I go, and I want to state that it's very important that we realize that these are all educators, whether charter or public schools. And I don't want to paint a negative light on those who choose to teach, regardless of where they choose to teach. I think when I asked her, this issue actually came up, and she says, "Marcus, you know, I've told actually a magazine that I want to stay out of it, because I'm an educator, and I feel that that's what I should be doing, than not engaging in this debate." And I respect that. I certainly respect that. Now, with that being said, she went on to talk about the waiting list at Sabbath as well, which almost is comparable to a Section Eight waiting list. It's sad. And I think that, yes, speaking to Counselor Shea's point, the option exists currently. You can get on a waiting list at Sabbath International. I mean, you might be number 3,000, but you'll be on a waiting list, that the option exists. And it won't go away by supporting this resolution that Counselor Walsh put on the table. It's capping it. And why is capping it important? Because it's already stated here, as well as the research I've done, the research that superintendent, that he relayed, it's taking money away from public schools. It's that simple. It's that simple. And as a product, I'm personally kind of offended by that. I mean, I like to believe, listen, I have four, five nephews and a niece that all have gone to Sabbath Internationals. They've received a sound education, a very sound education. And I wouldn't take that away from them. But saying that we need to put more schools in place like a Sabbath, in areas usually that are in suburbia, I don't think is the solution. We need to be focusing on public schools, what's failing there, how come we're not investing more in teacher training? How come we're not investing more in the systems that are in place before we turn and have a scapegoat? That is my point. And I really feel compelled to vote no on question two, and I'll say that for the record, because as a product of Commerce High School, Ballyett Elementary School, and Chestnut Accelerated Middle School, I think I turned out just okay.
Okay. Any other counselors on the resolution? Counselor Twigs?
Mr. President, I want to take the time, but I've made statements made on both sides of the issue. I just want to acknowledge that I'm not going to be voting for it. I worked for charter schools, served as president of a board at all the charter schools, and that was at Sabbath. It hurt my heart. There's some work that needs to be done, and I think it has to be done by the legislature. They need to do the work on this project. But, at the Council of Shea, hey, we need a choice. And for so long, I wasn't given a choice. But I think I am in a choice.
Okay. Counselor Williams, there's a motion to move the question. Is there a second? If we do that, it'll stop debate. Okay, motion made by Counselor Twigg, seconded by Counselor Ash. It requires two-thirds. So on the motion, Counselor Williams?
I just think this, in your bylaws, it says every counselor's had the right to speak on an issue. And that trumps moving the question, I really believe, with the check manuals. This is a very emotional situation.
We're going to entertain the motion, though, Counselor Williams, so if...
I want to speak to the issue.
Well, then, we've got to vote on the motion first, as presented. So if the motion fails, and it requires two-thirds to pass, then you can speak on the issue. But I'll admit, it's an unusual, it's an unusual, unlikely motion. But, okay, is there, all those in favor of the motion to move the question, which would stop debate?
I'll send my second. I want to speak if you...
Okay, the second is withdrawn. Is there a second to Counselor Twigg's motion, assuming it stands? Does your motion stand, Counselor Twigg?
I'm sorry?
Does your motion stand to move the question?
I must be allowed to start the conversation.
Okay, Counselor Williams, you're up.
You know, it's not beating the, well, I'll speak to what I really want to speak to with this body, but I'll do that at a later date. Mr. President, this is a very important issue, and to stymie or limit debate is not what the American system is about, city, local, or state. Now, I'm a co-sponsor of this, and I go back, I was the first person that supported charter schools in Springfield Sabbath, supported every charter school that's been here. Now, Counselor Shea makes some very valid points, very valid arguments. Also, the superintendents make valid points. What should really be established is a Blue Ribbon Commission in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to address all education. You know, it's a tale of two cities. It's the best of times for some, and it's the worst of times for others. If you go to poorer communities, poor communities, and if I was living on the north end or Mason Square, Indian Orchard, or Six Corners or something, and I was in a school that wasn't performing, and then I couldn't get to a school, I'd be outraged. And I said this to Governor Baker, "You're going to deal with this when the problem's like this." So how do you tell those folks on the waiting list, as Counselor Marcus Williams so eloquently presented, how do you tell those people to wait? And oh, by the way, charter schools does not reflect the diversity of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They do not. They never have. I don't think they ever will. Now, there's the diversity, the special needs kids, and oh, by the way, you know what you do in a charter school? You walk in and you say, "You gave that teacher a hard time." "Oh, yes, I did." Bye. You're out. You know what you end up? Back in the public schools. Public schools, you cannot get rid of kids like they... Public schools, you cannot get rid of kids like they do in the charter. That's a reality. So parents go to charter schools, being more understanding and trying to play by the rules. And oh, and oh, by the way, really by the way, every kid is entitled to an education, each and every kid. And as I said, I'm going to support this until they level the playing field. Give the superintendent playing with a full deck. No reimbursement on the transportation. We just lost, just under $5 million on charter schools, never mind the other $28 million they owe us for the busing. $5 million on transportation, and it is hurting the Springfield public school system. Now someone said, we shouldn't take a vote on this. The governor has taken a position on it, why wouldn't this body take a position on this? The Mayor Walsh in Boston has taken a position. Everyone's taken a position on it. It's okay, that's what debate is about. So I'm simply saying, I'm going to stand with the superintendent and the Springfield public school system until we have a more balanced and a more fair system that each and every individual, yes, I read the Boston Globe, did it, that minority kids are doing a lot better within those charters. But they get the cream of the crop. They get the cream of the crop. And the real underlying situation with the Blue Ribbon Commission is we need more parental, more families involved in education. No one wants to really bell the cap, because it's not popular to say that you're not forcing your kid to go to school. It's not popular to say that you, you won't be involved with your kid's education. You go to a charter school, you go to Parents' Night, or you go out in the suburbs, the parking lots are full of parents, superintendent, they're full of parents. We go to a PTO Parents' Night in the city, eight, six, 10 cars, Mr. President. Something is wrong. But oh, let that young person get into a fight with someone, as my wife had told me, then the whole family comes. But if it's something for PTO, meeting your teacher, going in and doing a play after school, we can't get them. There's something wrong with this system. And right now, it's a divide. It is a divide, it's an issue that's going to divide this Commonwealth, in my estimation. We got to do more things to pull everyone together. Because if the cap is lifted, we have, what, Mr. Superintendent, ask them a question, how many, what is the cap left in Springfield? We're not even at the cap yet.
No, there's a lot of seats left before we even get there.
So we still have a lot of seats in Springfield right now. So, Mr. President, that being said, I'm going to support this. I hope we, I hope we come down on the side of the superintendent and stand with the Springfield public school system until we make this system fairer, where all of our children can have an equal education, that's each and every individual, and cut this divide out. If it's got to be a charter school, or you've got to go to a Metco program, or you've got to go to the suburbs, we should be able to give our superintendent the tools that he needs, the money that he needs, so he can make a system that is fair, and we all work together, instead of taking money out of Springfield.
Okay. We're going to hear from Counselor Edwards. Before we do, just on a procedural matter, so everybody understands, it's not going to apply anymore because Counselor Twigg withdrew it, but sometimes we hear people say, move the question. It is, it is a motion under Rule 31, and it shall be admitted only when demanded by two-thirds of the member present. And that's when it would cut off debate. So I know we very rarely do it. Sometimes people say, move the question, Mr. President. If you say it to me in the form of a motion and somebody seconds it, and then two-thirds agree, then I'll cut off debate, but only then. So that's why that happened that way. Counselor Edwards?
I'm going to be very brief, at least attempt to, which most time is not very easy for me to do. I just like to offer a different perspective. I am also a product of the Springfield school system, but in fact, my first suspension occurred in kindergarten. And I got kicked out of school in first grade, second grade, third grade. As a matter of fact, in third grade, Mr. Levine told my mother I couldn't come back anymore. And it was Dr. Parks who reached out to the head of St. Michael's Cathedral, who got me into Cathedral Grammar School. I stayed in Cathedral Grammar School for three years. Sister Margaret McNulty still remembers this day, the day that I come walking down the hall with my mother, with my little Red Sox jacket on, which I was wearing proudly. But the point I want to try to make is, is that I lasted three years in private school at Cathedral Grammar. And if many of you remember, most of the more larger Catholic schools in this city, in this area, had schools, and a lot of our young people went to those schools. By the time, three years in that school, they couldn't handle me anymore. I was fortunate, I came along before we medicated children. But I did see the psychiatrists, the psychologists, and a whole other group of counselors who couldn't quite figure out what my problems were. I say this just so, not to kind of put my whole entire life out there, but if there's any child or anybody out there that's struggling with some of these issues that think that they're special, I was special. I ended up in fifth grade going to Eastern Avenue and Alden Street, when it was only four of us in the classroom. I went to school on the short bus, but they didn't make me wear a helmet. But that was actually the only time in my entire educational career, until I was grown, that I acted like I had some sense, because they treated me like I was dumb, and I had a learning problem, and I didn't, and I resented it. And the only way I could get out of that class was to behave. So when they sent me to school on the short bus at Eastern Avenue, in fifth grade, I was good long enough to get back into the public school. Fifth grade, second half of the year, I got suspended. I was suspended in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, my senior year, okay? So I'm one of those special kids. And what I'm, I want people to have a certain degree of respect for those who are parents who are desperate, desperate for a better education for their kids. But on the other side of it, I'm one of those kids that were, whose mother showed up in her house slippers, shuffling down the hallway when all, each classroom would have to be closed, because everybody knew Mrs. Barbara was coming down the hallway, and she'd be carrying her extension cord, that she was going to make me get buck naked in Sister Margaret's office and whoop me. And if you thought it worked back then, it didn't, but I survived. And there was nobody to call back then. There was no DISS or anything, and those three letters or whatever the call. I say all that because also, on the other side of that, as we, you know, we need to have compassion for those who are so desperate for their kids to do well, because my mom's was one of those. But I also worked at Munson Developmental Center. Many of you know that I started Belton Town State School, and then I transferred to Munson Developmental Center, and I did 21 years in there. I worked through privatization. If you go back far enough, yeah, you had Catholic schools, you even had private schools, I had McDuffies and Williston Academy, I remember they tried to take me to Williston, thought that would work. And I wasn't wearing no uniform. But I also lived through privatization. If you think back far enough, this is tied to privatization. Many years ago, many people who were very much interested in shrinking government, being able to say there was less state employees, and that the state employees who did work for the state were not good employees, they were lazy, we just didn't do a good job. Well, I tell you, when my mother had to go in a nursing home, I would have given a body part to have her in a state institution where she would have got a shower at least once a day, and twice if she needed one, as opposed to a nursing home where she was lucky to get a shower once a week. I say all that because the same people who are not entirely, those who are desperate for their kids to get a better education, let's have a respect for them. But on the other side, let's recognize, this is born out of the same people that would have been for decades trying to destroy down our local unions, and have been blaming state employees and state government for all of the ills of society. If all the children are not valued, then that's the problem. And that is what the problem is. If it works in a charter school, well, why shouldn't it work in a public school? Why aren't we sharing what were the best practices? Why should we have to have two separate formulas and two separate schools on educating our kids? If all kids are important, and I've heard all types of studies that say that if you can get a kid to graduate, the chances are greatly diminished of his interaction with the Department of Corrections. So why aren't we investing more money to get our kids graduated from high school? When did we figure out that it was more better for us to invest money in that pipeline to jail than to get our kids graduated? We know that some of the kids that come to our schools have problems. There's a lot of myriad of reasons why charter schools in some forms work better. We know they have a lot more expulsion rates. But we also know from the day one, your parent had to care enough to apply to get your kid in there. And then on top of that, they had to not only apply, they had to agree and make a contract that they're going to fulfill all the requirements of the page in order to keep their kid in the school. And it's absolutely right. The day your child goes to a charter school and acts like an idiot, they will kick him out, and where does he go? Right back to the public school, where they don't have the option of sending him somewhere else. So let's, but at the same time, I'm not in favor of charter schools. But I have, my heart bleeds for any child who is not getting a good education, because it's not, because of the excuse of the formula on how we fund our schools. Let's fund all the schools. Let's make sure that no school in the city of Springfield that's funded with taxpayer dollars has better facilities than the next one, or better anything, and then we wouldn't have to have this conversation. If it's a charter school, then why are they for profit? And you can't be for profit and have, no, what is it, Bill Welder, one of your Republican governors said his parents went into business so that he could put people to work. I threw up in my mouth when he said that. Because people, unless you're a nonprofit, you go into business to make money for your own family. And it's the same thing with these charters. Yes, there's good people who run charters, but if it's a for-profit, and if you're siphoning money off of the profits of the school, then that's not what your intention should be. If it works in a charter, let's do it in the public school. If it's, what if, if it works in a public school, then it should be able to transfer over. But let's recognize what the most important thing is, is having respect for both sides of this, because it is a passionate issue, but at the same time, where I may not feel like, my opinion is such, that it's not a good thing for the public schools, because they all need to be funded correctly, I still have compassion for those who are so desperate for their children to get a good education, that they're fighting for a choice. And the reality is, in this country, there's enough money around for every child to get a hamburger at least once a day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Edwards. Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank my colleagues for such a lively debate on this issue. I think we can, we can get a sense of the difficulty that people in the Commonwealth are going to have voting on this issue. But I myself am going to support this resolve. I urge you to support it, because I am putting my faith in the professionals that are on the front lines with our children, who will be greatly impacted by the results of this.
Okay. Any other counselors? All right. Seeing none, we've had a pretty lively debate on this, and I think there's more than enough people for and against for me to be confused with a voice vote, so we'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. We'll do a roll call for this.
And could you explain the vote?
This is a vote on approving the resolution that is against lifting the cap in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for charter schools.
Say that one more time, please.
A yes vote is in support of the resolution. The resolution is against raising the cap for charter schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. A no vote is a vote against the resolution. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Shea?
No.
No. Counselor Twigg?
No.
No. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook?
Absent.
Counselor Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Finn?
Yes. More than sufficient, ordinance is approved. Okay, this body will stand adjourned until Monday, October 17. There may be a special meeting called that evening. If there is a special meeting, it will be called at around 6 o'clock or 5:30. The purpose of the special meeting will be to start the signed regulation approvals for MGM, as we discussed at the last intermission. Okay?
October 17.
October 17. The regularly scheduled meeting is at 7:00. If I'm required to call a special meeting to add it to the agenda, I'm going to call it right before the meeting. So it'll be 6:00 or 5:30. Okay? Body will stand adjourned.